I call the meeting to order. This is the City Council meeting of February the 14th. And I'll ask the City Council to stand, well, not stand. We'll wait for the, Pastor Robert Lee will give the invocation. Yes, sir. And I'll ask councils to stand, and after the invocation, if the audience would stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Yes, sir.
Let us pray. Father, we come this evening to seek your face, to seek your peace, to seek your guidance as we discuss family business for the city that we love, the city of Portsmouth. We pray for our council, we pray for our city manager, we pray for all the leaders that are in authority over us, and we ask you, Lord, to be pleased with everything that's said and done tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty of the essence for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please? Well, I'll tell you what, we'll do it electronically. Please indicate your presence by voting yes. And Madam Clerk, I think that we have a quorum? Okay. The next item of business is consideration of the minutes. We have the minutes of a call meeting of January the 23rd, 2017. And we can do this all together. We have a call meeting of January 24th, 2017. We have the minutes of the regular meeting of January 24th, 2017. We have the minutes of a call meeting on February 3rd, 2017. And lastly, the minutes of a call meeting on February 4th, 2017. Is there a motion to approve?
Adoption.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Motion carries. And next, we have special presentations. And the first is a presentation of lapel pens to newly appointed board and commission members. And Vice Mayor Cherry will do that honor.
Okay. If the following would please join Vice Mayor Cherry at the Sergeant-at-Arms desk, Mr. Raymond Wilkins with the Board of Building Code Appeals, Mr. Elliott Moody with the Board of Zoning Appeals, Ms. Donna Si with the History Commission, Ms. Sally Divinudi with the Historic Preservation Commission, Mr. David Stevenson with the Historic Preservation Commission, Ms. Betty Norman with the Housing Board of Adjustments and Appeals, Ms. Sonya Chapman with the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority, Ms. Janine Taylor Smith with the Social Services Advisory Commission, Ms. Lynn Clements with the Todd Water Community College Board, and Ms. Paulette Franklin Jenkins with the Todd Water Community College Board.
First, let me say to you all, on behalf of our mayor and this entire City Council, I want to thank you for your willingness to serve the city of Portsmouth, give your time, and your time, your talents, and your efforts to make the city a better place. Now, congratulations for being selected to serve on these boards. What you're about to do plays a vital part in the running of this city. The council accounts on the recommendations that come from the various boards that you'll be serving on to make the vital decisions for our citizens. So I'd like for you to, you to join me, all those out there in the audience, and give them a round of applause.[324.12][324.12](applause) Do we have a brave volunteer who wants to say a few words on behalf of the group?[335.81][335.81](laughter) I knew it would be you.[338.03][338.03](laughter)
Thank you for allowing me to come and help y'all learn about the city. All of us are going to help y'all learn about the city, and we need y'all to get engaged with us because it is the citizens governing. Have a good night.
And to all of you out there and all those watching on television, we have other vacancies. Please check the website, call the Clerk's office. You can apply online, or you can go to Clerk's office and fill out an application. We'd love to have you join as we make move Portsmouth forward. Thank you very much, and God bless you all. Thanks.[376.22][376.22](applause)
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cherry, and thank you all the new appointees for giving back to our great community. The next presentation is a new category, and it is called Recognizing Our Young Stars of Tomorrow. And I think, Madam Clerk, your office came up with that term, did it not?
It was actually the U.S. Conference of Mayors.
Okay. Well, these are our young stars here in Portsmouth, Virginia. And we'd like to recognize one who's been recognized at the state level. We belong to the Virginia Municipal League. The Virginia Municipal League is the association which all the cities and towns and their urban counties belong to. And for the last several years, they've been running a contest in which they ask students throughout the state to submit an essay entitled "If I Were Mayor." "If I Were Mayor." And it's got to be 1,200 words long. And think back when you were in the eighth grade or seventh grade, and you had the assignment to write anything that was 1,200 words long. And it's my great pleasure to introduce to you Terrence Massenberg. And I'll ask Terrence to come forward. And Vice Mayor, would you join him down, and I'll come down too? And would your parents come forward too, if they're here? And Terrence is a student at Churchland Middle School. And if you'll come here and stand, he is the winner for our region of the state. Isn't that cool?[511.22][511.22](applause) Out of thousands of essays. And he was recognized by the governor on January 25th for his outstanding essay. And first, not to put you on the spot, Terrence, but if you would tell the audience something about yourself, and introduce your parents, and then read your essay, please.
My parents are Deborah and Florence Massenberg. I'm Terrence, and I am 11 years old. And I go to Churchland Middle School, which is across the bridge that way, I believe.[553.16][553.16](laughter)
That's right.
That's about myself. I'm 11 years old, of course. I just said that, but...
Would you read your essay, please?
Thank you, thank you, City Council members and Mayor Rowe for having me here today. And thanks to Ms. Kimzy, my principal, for coming here today.
Is she here?
Yes, she's right there. "If I Were Mayor." If I were mayor, there would be many things I would do to make the city of Portsmouth better. As mayor, I would help people recycle and reduce waste. Another thing I would do as mayor is teach people how to become safer online. The third thing I would do as mayor is listen to the city's needs and wants. The first thing I would do as mayor is help people recycle and reduce waste. The reason I would like to recycle and recycle is because most places are filled with waste and are contaminated. This is important because landfills are associated with pollution, risk to soil, air, water, odors, and increased traffic from heavy trucks loaded with landfill-bound waste. In 2015, Virginia's solid waste management facilities received and handled 15 million tons of waste. The second thing I would do if I were mayor is teach people how to become safer online. If you are safer online, then the number of child predators and cyber bullies will decrease because safety is my top priority. The reason I would like to decrease cyber bullying is because people are starting to kill themselves because of this, and it's not just in Portsmouth. Child predators are a major concern to me because they lure children with puppies, ice cream, candy, and kids are falling for it. The third and final thing I would do as mayor is take the time, take time to listen to the city's needs and wants. Every two weeks, we will have a town hall meeting to discuss your needs and wants. The reason for this is because not everyone gets to share their ideas, so this is a place where you can. Everyone's comments will be heard even if you're homeless or poor. We can change, we can change the city and turn it into a better one if we work hard and contribute. Recycling and reducing waste is a good way to help your community. The decrease in cyber bullying and child predators is my top priority because parents need to know where their, that their children are safe. Everyone's needs will be heard, and you will get to share your opinions. I would do my best to make sure that this is the best city ever, and that's what I would do if I were mayor.[714.12][714.12](applause)
But isn't that great? Would you like to add some comments, or do you have outstanding people?
Sure. We are very, very, very proud of Terrence, not only for what he has done, as you heard, that was an outstanding essay from an 11-year-old student. He has outstanding ideas. In addition, he inspires not only the students at our school, but also the adults. So we are very thankful that you have chosen to make Churchill Middle School your school home, and we are very proud of you.[767.00][767.00](applause)
Mayor, you know, I know his parents, and they're always taking pictures. Y'all did come get a picture one time.[777.23][777.23](laughter)
(inaudible) You know, that's what makes our city so great. And you just saw a glimpse of our future. Isn't that great?[846.11][846.11](applause) Okay. Madam Clerk, would you read the protocol for speakers?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
We're at Agenda Item 1779, which is the adoption of an ordinance to accept and appropriate a certain grant. Madam Clerk, would you read the title, the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting $5,000 of Home Investment Partnerships Program funds and appropriating said amount in the FY 2017 Community Planning and Development Program Fund.
So that we can get this matter before us for discussion, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance? There's a motion, there's a second. You've heard the motion and the second to approve. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? Let's, ready for the question? All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. Motion carries. The next item is Item 1780, which is another acceptance of a grant and appropriating the grant funds. Madam Clerk, would you read the title, the caption to that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting an allocation of $37,405 from the Virginia Technology Trust Fund and appropriating said amount in the FY 2017 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Circuit Court Clerk's Office to fund technology improvements.
So that we can get this matter before us for discussion and action, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? The motion is to approve. The motion is before us, the question is before you. Any discussion? We'll vote electronically. All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. The motion carries. Which brings us to Item 1781, which is the adoption of an ordinance to transfer certain funds. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption to the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to transfer $258,096 from the non-departmental salary line item of the FY 2017 General Fund Budget to the Public Works General Services Line item of FY 2017 General Fund Budget for the purpose of funding costs incurred in connection with winter storm Helena.
So that we can get this matter before us for action, is there a motion? We have a motion to approve, adopt the ordinance. The question is before us. Any discussion? Hearing none? We'll vote electronically. All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. This brings us to Item 1782, which is the consideration of the adoption of an ordinance authorizing the payment from the general fund of a one-time supplement to retirees. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption to the ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance authorizing payment from the general fund of a one-time supplement in the net amount of $500 to beneficiaries under the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System and the Fire and Police Retirement System.
Okay, the, the motion is to adopt the ordinance, and we have a second, and we're ready for discussion, and we do have speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. Garland Alexander. And you have five minutes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Cherry, City Council members, and Dr. Patton. My name is Garland Alexander. I live at 2913 Tan Bark Lane, Portsmouth, Virginia. I'm here tonight representing Police and Fire Retired Association, as well as Local Fire 39 Association. We appreciate that Dr. Patton was able to find the funds for this one-time bonus for all city retirees. And we are asking council to support this. And I would, do you have any questions? And I would ask everybody that supports this to please stand.
Thank you. Are, you're finished?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And our next speaker is Mr. Mark Godelgi-Yatroski. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council and fellow citizens. I do not support this. It continues in the, in a long-established tradition of providing a payment to retirees that is half what is paid to those people on the payroll of the city. And I believe that is an incorrect formulation. The social security system, which is paying me monthly allocations, uses the Consumer Price Index to determine what the amount of increase should be for recipients. This year, after a year of receiving no increase at all, those of us on social security received three tenths of a percent, which amounted to a few more dollars. The cost of living in this country, since the implosion of 2008, has increased at a negligible rate, which is quite a variance from what it had been doing in the past. And the problem is, when you pay out $560,000 from savings that have not been identified, you haven't, you haven't identified the opportunity costs that are being foregone. One of those opportunity costs could be shoring up the retirement funds. As indicated in the background document that was supplied, the current level of funding in the PSRS and the FPRS are 77% and 74% respectively. When the pension obligation bond debt was incurred three years ago, the object was to shore up those funds, which had lagged considerably below the 80% accepted value of funding. At this point in time, the funds are still below 80%. That money could be going there. As the relative funding level falls, the burden on the taxpayer will increase. And one of the, one of the demographic realities in Portsmouth is a large number of the people who comprise the tax base are retirees themselves. Most of us do not receive annual increases at this level. Most of us receive level funding from our retirement funds. And so you are asking people who are receiving no increase to fund increases for other retirees. That's inequitable. You are also asking working people who have not seen increases in their base pay since 2008 to fund increases for people who are retirees. That's not equitable either. When we put $170 million into the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System, part of that money went to allow the elimination of the social security offset. The people who are in that part of the system received the biggest one-time bonus that anybody has ever seen in this city. They should be excluded from any consideration for increases because of that, that massive But for the Fire and Police Retirement System, the formulation should be the lesser of the increase in city revenue or the increase in social security payments. The rates should be the lesser of those two. Otherwise, you are putting a burden on other taxpayers. Thank you.
We have no further speakers from the public. This is now ready for council's discussion. Any discussion? Okay, we're ready for the question. All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. The motion carries, 7-0. Which brings us to Item 1783, which is adoption of a resolution adopting the vision principles and guiding principles for the City Council. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the resolution, please?
A resolution adopting the vision principles and guiding principles of the Portsmouth City Council.
Excuse me. Let me explain what's going on up here. Somebody hits the Vice Mayor's car. And let us take care of that, that business. Okay, we're good. We're good. In order for this to get before us, is there a motion to adopt the resolu... Okay, and second. And we have the motion to adopt, and it's ready for our discussion, and we do have one speaker, and that is Mr. Mark Godelgi-Yatroski.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council and fellow citizens. As somebody who watched the sausage being made without an opportunity to provide formal input, I want to take this opportunity to express a couple of concerns about your guiding principles. First of all, there's focus on respectful communication and zero tolerance for respect. Why state in two principle, in two sentences what you could state in one? Focus on respectful communication seems adequate. I never liked the zero tolerance language. That sounds like somebody who's looking for a fight. When you say you won't tolerate it at all, there will be somebody who will test you on that. It's, it's pointless to set yourselves up for confrontation. Secondly, there should be a clarification that when you're talking about focus on respectful communication, that it's not just among yourselves, but the respectful communication must be in two directions, from the citizens to council, council to the citizens, and from council to your appointees and city staff, and vice versa. One of the great deficiencies of council operations going back at least 20 years has been that council appointees have not always been treated with respect by members of council. When I supervised people, the HR folks impressed upon us the importance of telling the people we worked for what we expected, but keeping the conversation respectful. And that's a great principle for you to follow because we, the taxpayers, bear the burden when we lose valued employees who've been treated badly. We also bear the burden when somebody who has been terminated sues the city. So this, to me, is a significant aspect of what the respectful communication should be. of what the respectful communication should embody. There has been considerable disrespect over the last few years from people at this podium directed toward council. But I've also seen disrespect directed at citizens. So it is important that you all model the behavior that you desire. Those are my concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. The matter is now before us for discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready for the question. All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, nay. The motion carries. Thank you. This brings us to new business, and it's item 1784, which is boards and commissions. And Vice Mayor, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to move for the following appointments. For Economic Development Authority, Mr. Kathy Revel, Mr. Don Scott. Planning Commission, Mr. Neil Hoffler. For the redevelopment Housing Authority, Mr. Davey Smith III. For the Ports and Industrial Commission, Mr. Grant Ryanberg.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to make these appointments. Any discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. The motion carries. Thank you. The next, we have items submitted by council. Item 1785. Items submitted by council. Okay?
Yes, sir, thank you. I move to add an item to the agenda regarding the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority.
Is there a second?
Second.
The question is, we have a motion to add an item to the agenda. Any discussion? Are ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, nay. The motion carries. And Madam Clerk, would you read the letter that's the-
Yes, sir. February 15, 2017, PRHA Commissioner, in reference to proposed removal from Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority. I am sending you this letter on behalf of the Portsmouth City Council. The purpose of this notice is to inform you that the city council, on February 14, 2017, voted to hold a hearing to consider your removal as a commissioner from the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority, pursuant to Virginia Code Annuity- Attained, excuse me, which provides that a commissioner may be removed for the following reasons. One, inefficiency, or two, neglect of duty, or three, misconduct in office. Portsmouth City Council has cause to believe that you have been inefficient and/or in neglect of your duties as a commissioner relating to findings made and concerns raised by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development concerning its onsite assessment in March of 2016. In a letter dated April 27, 2016, from Catherine Lambert, Director, Office of Public Housing with HUD, detailed findings were made and concerns were raised regarding governance, HCV utilization, procurement practices, and lead-based paint compliance. The findings and concerns outlined by HUD provide a basis for this hearing, as well as subsequent interaction of the commissioners of PRHA. In addition, city council has cause to believe that the commissioner's relationship with the various PRHA executive directors and staff has been ineffective since January 1, 2016. City council has scheduled a hearing with regard to your proposed removal as a PRHA commissioner for 5:00 PM Tuesday, February 28, 2017, at the city council meeting located at 801 Crawford Street, 6th floor, Portsmouth, Virginia 23704. At that time, you have a right to present evidence as to why you believe that you should not be removed as a commissioner, and you have a right to bring an attorney to represent you should you choose to do so. In lieu of responding to the above referenced charges, if you so desire, then city council will accept your resignation as a PRHA commissioner on or before close of business on Tuesday, February 21, 2017. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Sincerely, our Mayor John L. Rowe, Jr.
Is there a motion pertaining to this letter?
So moved.
Will you read the motion, please?
I move to direct the mayor to issue a notice of hearing for February the 28th at 5:00 PM in order to consider the removal of PRHA members who have served longer than six months, and issue an invitation to those individuals to resign should they choose to do so.
Is there a second to the motion? Okay. We have a motion and a second, and the question is before you. And we will start our, our discussion. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Yes, I will be voting against this motion. I would like the citizens to know that there is a grave injustice that is about to be done to a group of people. And I hope that there are citizens out there that are socially conscious and aware of what I'm about to share. It has been the recommendation of this council to have members of the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority to be removed as commissioners because of an onsite assessment that was done in March of 2016. That onsite assessment revealed certain findings and concerns as expressed by HUD. I want to share with you that I requested from the clerk the dates of appointment for the commissioners that are about to be removed from the board. And I hope those that are socially conscious will recognize what this information is I'm about to give you. The assessment by HUD was done on March 16 through the 18 of 2016. The commissioners that are about to be removed, based on the information that was given to me by the clerk, were appointed to the board in, on February the 23, 2016, and also October 28, 2015. That means that when the onsite assessment was done, that the board members who are about to be removed, some of them had not even been on the board for a month. It was brought to council's attention that this is being done because of the procurement process in which legal services were obtained by Mr. Eric Moody. The persons that are being removed were not on the board at the time. Those that were appointed in 2016 and 15 were not on the board at the time of that procurement vote. So if that is the case, how is it that they are now being blamed for something that they weren't even on the board when it occurred? Also, I would like to share that in the letter that council has directed the city attorney to draft, that the language in the letter is not applicable to this group because there has not been any indication given to council of any inefficiency, neglect of duty, or misconduct. I'm sharing this with citizens who are socially conscious and believe in justice because this has nothing to do with the HUD investigation because the persons who are being removed, for the most part, were not on the board at that time. This has all to do with the fact that we have raised issues about GPDC, Greater Portsmouth Development Corporation, and we have raised issues about Cooper, Spong, and Davis legal representation. And so I just want to share that with the citizens to let them know that what is being done has nothing to do with HUD, but it has everything to do with trying to cover up things that have been going on that have been exposed. Because if it were about that, then you wouldn't be removing people who weren't even on the board at the time when this incident that is being reported by HUD occurred. And I just want to make sure, too, that there were no findings against the board. And if you read the report as I have, there are no findings against the board in regards to governance. There are findings in regards to day-to-day operations, which you know a board has nothing to do with day-to-day operations. That is done by management. And so there's a disservice that is being done. And I would like to ask you, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned yesterday that there was a meeting in December where you spoke with HUD before you were the mayor. Did you also meet with the interim executive director in December regarding persons who should be on the board?
Dr. Whitaker, your, your question is not really germane to the motion.
Yes, it's-
We're not here to litigate the-
It's germane to the motion because this motion is talking about removal of commissioners. The question I'm asking you is, did you meet with the interim director of PRHA in December in discussing who should be on the board?
Your question is not germane to the motion.
Yes, it is because-
That's the ruling of the chair, and you're out of order.
I'm not, that's, it's not an order issue. It's a procedure issue, once again.
You can appeal the ruling of the chair to the council if you so like.
No, it's not an issue of order. It's an issue of procedure. I'm not out of order. I'm speaking to the issue of removal. And I've asked you, did you meet with the interim director of PRHA in December to discuss who should be on the board? Because I have a copy of the agenda that was shared at that meeting. And on the agenda, it has the names of persons who the interim executive director recommended to you. And one of those persons that's on this list, we just voted on tonight, Davey Smith. And there are several other names up here that were presented. And so I'm asking you because we just had a discussion this evening about our city assessor not being able to recommend persons to be appointed to the Board of Equalization because that would be a conflict. Why wouldn't this be a conflict with the interim director recommending who should be on the board and meeting with you prior to you being the mayor?
Dr. Whitaker, your mo-
And so I just want the citizens-
Your question-
I know you're trying to cover it up.
No, I'm not.
You're trying to cover it up. And so I want the citizens to know.
You no longer have the floor, sir.
I want the citizens to know what-
I rule you out of order.
I'm not out of order. I'm speaking to the issue.
You're ruled out of order. If you want to appeal to the, to the-
I'm not appealing because it's not out of order.
All right, that you're appealing?
It's not out of order.
All right, the motion is, then would be whether or not council sustains the position of the mayor. Are you ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, vote yes.
So you're not going to answer the question about meeting with the interim executive director?
I'll be glad to talk about any meeting that I've had, but you're out of order.
So, so you're not going to answer that question?
The council has sustained the position of the chair, sir. So let's-
I'm just asking, you're not going to answer that question?
You're out of order.
You ran on being transparent. And so are you going to answer the question?
You're out of order, sir. Mr. Moody. Okay. Ms. Simmons.
Yes, sir, I said I wasn't going to say anything, but I can't stand it. I'm going to support this item. We're here for discussion, is that right?
We are.
Okay. And my colleague used the term socially conscious. Those of you who attend these meetings regularly know that I've brought this up numerous times over the last six months. And it has nothing to do with GPDC or mayor's meeting with anybody, this one or the previous one. I've watched this PRHA board, which I helped appoint, get into a legal battle over procurement, hiring three or four different sets of attorneys. It's embarrassing. It's, it's not the way to run a railroad. I watched them have a very disrespectful public firing of a very long-term executive director. We talk about justice. I don't see where the justice was for him. I know that employees have reported a hostile workplace because of the interactions of members of the board with the day-to-day operations of the agency. This agency is, is one that we should all be very proud of. It's one of the finest housing authorities in the nation and one of the oldest. And somewhere along the way, in the last six to 12 months, it has really lost its way. And the only way I know to fix this is to start at the top and remove those in charge and start over again. So I will be voting to support this.
Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be voting to support it also. My colleague outlined, I think the problems have been well documented in the Virginian Pilot on various media sources. Quite frankly, they've been embarrassing. As my colleague mentioned, that, that Housing Authority years passed has been award-winning. They had a director that did a stellar job. They had a assistant director who's now working at Virginia Beach because the board really ran her out of the city. Part of the problem was with Mr. Whitaker. The interim director said that he didn't get along with her and other members there. My colleague here, who was the new liaison appointed by this council, was kept out of a closed meeting a few weeks ago. So this board has had ample opportunity to do the right thing, to do as boards are supposed to do, make good decisions. Unfortunately, those decisions have cost the Housing Authority a lot of money. The bill hasn't been totaled yet. Most of it revolves around going against their own procurement requests for proposals. You know, when you put out a request for proposal, you put specific criteria on what the decision will be based on. Unfortunately, they went against their own rules. Consequently, a lawsuit resulted. So, no, the, the board members need to be replaced so we can get back to that award-winning housing agency that, that we've enjoyed as a city for years. So the mayor's exactly right. It's time to make a decision and get on down the road. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke.
Yes, good evening, everyone. As the new appointee to the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority, I am one who is socially conscious. And I am put on the board to see the inner dealings of the PRHA board. In my one meeting that I, that I attended, I, you know, felt that there was some contention in the meeting. And, and no one should be felt that they are working in an environment that is contentious. It was brought to my attention and announced that, that I had some conflict. I have addressed a letter to our counsel, Solomon, our city attorney, to identify that there is no conflict with me being executive director of Lucas Lodge. In my business, we do utilize the services of Cooper, Spong, and Davis to serve as our state agents for our state corporation commissions and some other work which I believe are not in conflict with my duties on the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority. As far as Davey Smith, he has been an excellent board member and chair of the Planning Commission. And he has expressed an interest to serve on other boards to many of us. and he has expressed an interest to serve on other boards to many of us at different times, different boards he's applied for, and many for which he is capable. So, you know, taking a directive from someone, you know, that, of course, was not the case. So, I am socially conscious, I believe, as one who has been a past president of a board, Girls Inc., served for 10 years. And we had several times where we did not have an executive director due to them moving on in one past. And at no point in time is the board to go in and to handle the day-to-day operations of an executive committee when we had a sitting executive director that's disrespectful, and it should not be tolerated. So, I believe that we are moving in the direction that we should remove the board members that are there, and I'll be in supporting of this.
Dr. Whitaker, I noticed that you want to speak again, but in fairness to our colleagues, I want to give an opportunity to those who have not spoken. All right, Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, in regards to what Councilwoman Simmons said, the issue that's in the removal letter deals specifically with the onsite assessment as of March of 2016. And as I said before, if you're about justice, those members were not on the board at the time of the onsite assessment. Particularly, you raise an issue about the women need to go. It's interesting that it was a male who actually made the motion for the Legal Services contract when Moody was awarded the contract. Also, as far as the procurement issue is concerned, the procurement issue was a management finding. If you go and read the document, which I'm encouraging the citizens to read the document versus hearing persons talk off the top of their heads who have not critically read the document, you will find that the procurement issue with Cooper, Spong, and Davis was that the contract was extended for a five-year period, which was in violation, which was the doing of management, not the board. Also, in regards to the contract being given to one who had a lower score, once again, if you go back and read the document, you will find that there was one person who rated Mr. Moody's firm extremely low. And that person that did it has a relationship with one of the council members. And so, I think that needs to be brought to light. And then, as far as this lawsuit is concerned, that lawsuit is presently still going on. And as far as a conflict of interest, I think it's interesting that the interim executive director sent a letter to this council saying that there was a conflict of interest with me and the attorney that represents me, but yet, I didn't see her find a conflict of interest with Councilman Lucas Burke when her law firm is presently in litigation with the GPDC matter that has not been settled yet. And so, if we're going to call a conflict, let's call it both ways. And so, I would like the citizens to know that much of this information that is being presented to you, I would ask you to read the document and not listen to this off-the-cuff remarks that council members are misleading and giving false information to the public. And therefore, I will vote against this because it is about GPDC.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to clarify, the Moody Law Firm has been mentioned a few times, that-
That's not true.
And I just want to make sure that everybody knows that's no relation to me, nothing against the Moody Law Firm, nor is it the Willard Moody Law Firm, so just wanted to make that clear.
Duly noted. Any further discussion? We're ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, vote yes, opposed nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Any other items submitted by council? Brings us-
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Whitaker, Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, thank you. I would like to, with this being Black History Month celebration, I would like to bring to council's attention, there has been, last week, there have been two major movements that I think needs to come to our attention considering some major discussions that we've had here in the city of Portsmouth. I'm a firm believer that peace is the presence of justice, and if there's no justice, there's no peace. And so, last week, the Charlottesville City Council voted to remove the statue of Robert E. Lee out of its Central Park. And I would like to share with the citizens a comment that was made by Jelaine Schmidt, the University of Virginia professor, who mentioned that these African-American refugees of previous generations were driven from our town. They found no sanctuary city here in Charlottesville. And in the 1920s, leading white citizens' contempt for black humanity was enshrined in Charlottesville's public spaces. These monuments prompted, and still perpetuate, a romantic false narrative of the lost cause, which erases the memory of the enslaved majority. And then, this past Saturday, the president of Yale University announced that Yale University would be removing the name of John Calhoun from one of its residential buildings. John Calhoun, a white supremacist, and was also the vice president of the United States. It's interesting how history repeats itself. And I want to share that I have brought up in the past that having the Confederate monument in the center of our city, the former Center Square, represents a symbol of white supremacy and racism. And if Portsmouth is to be the new Portsmouth, we cannot continue to let old guards of discrimination stand. And if Charlottesville, Virginia, as conservative as it is, has seen the light to remove that Confederate stain, then I believe that Portsmouth, if it is truly going to respect the humanity of all, should remove the monument and put it in a place where people who would like to go see it can see it and not hold those hostage to looking at a dehumanizing monument.
Thank you, sir. Any other items? This brings us to item 1786, Report on Pending Items. Dr. Patton, are there any? Okay. Hearing done, we'll move to item 1787, which is Non-Agenda Speakers. And the first speaker is Sergeant Major Clyde Toler. You have five minutes, sir.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, sign the arm, Ms. Whitestaff, city manager, and the city attorney. Clyde Toler, 100 blocks of Blair Street. First thing I want to bring up is respect. Why are we going through this disrespect again? Stop it. Respect one another, respect the chair. Come on, we can do better than that. You come from an educated school, but stop being an educated fool. But anyway, I want to say this, there's people that got a lot of disrespect here, and it hurts me when I have seen what I have seen from World War II to Korea to Vietnam, and I see somebody sitting in a wheelchair in here and put their hand over their heart when we do the pledge of allegiance, when I see somebody sit here and won't even stand and text, that gets next to me. Now, I can see a person that's an atheist and don't want to do, we got some that's atheist and all, they stay out of here, but after we do their vocation and everything, they come in here and they always up here speaking, but they never come in here and do the pledge. I fought for that flag, I seen brothers, fathers, young men, some died on me and in my arms. And when I see you and I think about what I did, and you sit here and do that, that irritates me. Boy, the other thing I want to bring before you is Truxton. Please, if you've got any money in that budget, can find some, you get a fire department put out there. I was out there that Saturday when that wind was bad. If the old one house catch on fire and the far away that fire department is, we gonna have one of the biggest mass fires that ever happened out there. Look, do something. If you can't do anything, get a fire department. Let the fire truck come out there and sit in there by Douglas Park School, and then he closed, so if some happen, instead of sitting down in the garage, it'd be right there near it and can stop this from happening. It's a lot of old people live out there. I'm old, too, and I go out there and I don't want to be caught out there in a blaze of fire either. But anyway, you find something to do and get that fire station out there. Do something before March come, you know what the March wind does. All right, the next thing I got, everybody know, you can see this sign. This is my sign. Mr. Rowe, the mayor, had not put in, say he wanted to be mayor or anything. I had these signs made, a lot of them. And then, I called him and told him, he said, Sergeant Major, I didn't tell you I want to be no mayor. He said, I gotta talk that over with my wife. But I did this, I want everybody, don't be putting no Joe Blow and all that on here, don't be writing big on it, I want your signatures to go on here till I do the front and the back. Now, if you don't choose to do so, it's not going to hurt my feelings because we all have some hate in us, and we need to get rid of it. But look, let's take this council, you're moving forward and you're doing good, and I'm glad you're not starting to argument fussing off, but Mayor, I'm gonna tell you, you're in the chair, hit the gather, put Mr. Whitaker out. You're gonna put me out, put him out, too.
Ladies and gentlemen, please do not show any emotion. Our next speaker is Donna Si. Before you get up there, we have a member of council would like to have the floor. Councilwoman Simmons.
Sergeant Major, on behalf of the ladies at the dais, you all may or may not know that for many, many years, Sergeant Major Toler has brought us Valentine presents every year, and this year is no exception, so thank you so much for our cute little stuffed toys. That is very sweet and very chivalrous. And we appreciate it.
I forgot to say, Mayor, Happy Valentine to all the ladies, because Valentine is not for men, it's for the ladies, chocolates and sweets. But Happy Valentine to each and every one all throughout the city and neighborhood. Happy Valentine.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Donna Si, please. You have five minutes, ma'am.
My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Principles of Liberty 17 states that a system of checks and balances should be adopted to prevent the abuse of power. In the Constitution of Virginia, Article 1 of the Virginia, the Bill of Rights, Section 3 states that the government is instituted for the common benefit, protection, and security of the people, nation, or community. The government is best, which is capable of producing the greatest degree of happiness and safety, and is most effectually secured against the danger of maladministration. We, the people, are not secure against maladministration in Portsmouth. We have not been secure for a long, long time. At last night's public work session, with the discussion regarding the fire station that was supposed to be built for the neighborhood in Truxton, opened the history of maladministration. This maladministration opened the door to the highest tax rate in the area and another tax increase last year. We, the people, are being taxed without our consent because nobody is standing up for what's right. Who can we trust? All the wrongs committed against we, the people, has not been repaired. It is time to clean up the abuse that was done to we, the people, and is still continuing with one member on this council, and I am tired of being abused by this city.
Thank you, ma'am. Please forgive me if I mispronounce the next name, Rohard Markle?
Richard Markle.
Richard, I'm sorry. It's R-O here. And I apologize, sir. You have five minutes.
Ms. Rowe, council members?
If you would move to the mic, sir.
My name is Richard Markle. I'm retired on disability from Portsmouth Police Department, also a member of the Retired Police Fire Association. Let's start with a couple of letters that we got from the city, from Human Resource Management. One was telling us what the prices were going to be for our premiums for our spouses that were with optimal. We got that letter, it was dated October 19th. So, in page two shows what the amount was. Page three gave dates and locations and times for us to meet with city members of Human Resource. Then, the fourth page is a letter dated October 24th. This one was signed by Elizabeth Gooden. It stated our increase was going to go from, we're on the HMO for the spouse only, from $502 to $948. On December 1st, the fifth page, I got a letter in the mail, well, a couple of days after, we got a letter in the mail stating my wife's health insurance is going to be Then, I started calling down to the city. I spoke with, let's get his name here real quick, Mr. Blair. I was told he's the one I needed to speak to about that. I had left a message for him, he called me back twice, and he advised that all spouses, all the retired police and firefighters' insurance was being canceled. Then, later on that evening, on the 7th, I got a call, no, I mean, on the 9th, I got a call from Ms. Elizabeth Gooden. I told her what's going on, and I also advised her that I'm going to notify Mr. Rowe before he was mayor, because he's going to be at a party that I was going to be at. And he asked me to bring this information up before the city council. Well, Ms. Gooden finally called me back. My wife and I met with her on the 12th of December 2016 at 10 o'clock. She advised she would try to find some health insurance for us with some company. That was on the 10th when we met with her. Later on that evening, after 5:00, I got a call from Ms. Gooden stating that the insurance premiums are going to stay as they were in the 19th, October 19th letter. Mayor, city council, there's only one person in this city that can make that decision, and that's Ms. Patton, not Ms. Gooden. So, I blame her. Another, the last two pages, the last page is a thing I got from the Workers' Compensation Commission. Advised me that the city has gotten away from PMA, who was handling the workers' comp claims for the disabled, police, fire, and the city employees, that they went to another company from PMA to, it's called Risk Management Programs Incorporated. I asked about, why didn't we get a letter? They said they sent letters out. I said, no, you didn't, because I would have gotten, and nobody else has gotten one. The way we were informed of this is through the Workers' Compensation Commission. I just appreciate your time, but I wanted to bring this up in front of the city council and Mayor Rowe.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You have that. Dr. Patton?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council, I will do a thorough investigation and get you a written report and have a follow-up with- will do a thorough investigation and get you a written report and have a follow-up with the citizen.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Joel Atkins. Sir, you have five minutes.
Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Chair, council members, my name is Joel Atkins. I live in the South Park Manor area on White Stone Avenue. But first, I'd like to tell you what I think of my credentials for being here. I was raised in Prentice Park in a house my dad bought a little over 100 years ago. Attended all the schools, walking back and forth. When I became of age, the Selective Service Board says we need you in the Marine Corps. I went, honorably discharged in 1946. A few years later, I got married and eventually bought a house on White Stone Avenue at the Denian. Nice place for raising children, playing in the street. However, there's a drainage ditch that runs adjacent to my house. All the kids, it's a magnet for them, turtles and frogs. As time went on, Olive Branch School was built, piped in the ditch up to my property line. There began the problem with cavins. Richard Hartman was very cooperative, maintaining, filling any ditches, rather, the holes. The way I found the holes is cutting grass, and my foot would disappear. It went on and off the wall, the ditch began to dissipate, the sides were caving in. The city, under Mr. Hartman, came in and cut the weeds. I cut the grass all the way up to the ditch, everything went fine. Mr. Hartman left, as you know, and you have another director. I can probably contact the CIA easier than getting to his office. I've seen him three times. One time, he comes out and tells me that, we're gonna take care of your problem, Mr. Atkins, and we have to get a permit. Next time he comes out, well, we gotta permit, and we're gonna put out bits to the contractors. Next time he comes out, well, we have to get a permit from the Army Corps of Engineers. This is wetlands, you know? I said, wasn't, showing hell wasn't wetlands when I moved here 60-something years ago. My land has been encroached by the absence of water draining properly in the ditch. The last storm we had, Matthew, I think it was, had little artesian wells coming up in my side yard, front of water saturated in the property. My land sort of goes downward a little bit to the ditch. My lawn tractor gets stuck, I get my truck to get the lawn tractor out, the tractor, my truck gets stuck. I get enabled to retrieve that for me. There were ruts in there, so I asked the manager, when your men come, I better bring me some filter to fill in these ruts. We don't supply filter for private property. I says, it's your fault that ruts are in there, nothing happened on that. Well, the next time he comes, he says, we have to get a permit. I have a copy of the permit right here. The permit was issued to the city of Portsmouth, in that division, his name, for a period of five years. They gave me pictures, here are your pictures of the ditch outlining it, it goes on Amherst Lane on out to the river. As it leaves my property, it's about this deep now. It's all stagnated, and you can imagine about the mosquitoes. I gotta wind up. I'm not asking for anything, we pay for it. All I'm asking for, do your duty, get my ditch fixed. I'll have him, I'll let him have my copy of the permit if he needs it. But I've been around here 91 years next month, that's all I want you to do. My next move is Olive Branch, and I guarantee you, it won't be in the ditch there. I think that's about it, Mr. Patton.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Dr. Patton, would you have somebody from your staff?
Yes, I will have Mrs. Hoag to get the information shortly, and we will give you a full report and get back with the citizen.
Our next speaker is Wilbur Allen. And sir, you have five minutes.
With respect to the chairs and citizens, this evening, my name is Wilbur Allen. I live at 1326 Charleston Avenue, Portsmouth, Virginia. I've resided in this city going about 11 years. But this is a lot of concern, and I decided to become a part of a board here. And as a Christian and a believer, somebody would say, you don't mix politics and religion. But I always want to say this, you know, sometimes we live in a time when the Bible said, based on what Timothy, Paul told Timothy, preach it in season and out of season, we prove, we prove with our long suffering and doctrine, because the time will come when men will not endure some doctrine. And when we look in the past of, of the leaders, David and Saul, there was conflict, and that's why Jesus came to make a difference. We are living grace now, but we taking things for granted. And one other thing I have here to share is this. First, I always said, a leader have to set example for another generation. And it said that, leader is not about being in charge, leader is about taking of those, taking things of, about change. A leader's show ways of grow, of ways of growing, our development. A leader's build positive infrastructure, you know? And furthermore, it said that a leader guide the citizens to, to the right decisions making, and also to, to build the abilities that they may able to go forward for their city. And, you know, I was looking at the whole diagram about, about the city. One other thing I realized that we miss, you know, I respect everybody up there, everybody have their role to play. But the point is, the citizens have power even more than you guys up there, respects you. But sometime, what happened, we didn't realize that. And that's what happened in life. When one generation, between, between a 40-year or 30-year with the Jews, if they missed the teaching and the principle and the guideline of going forward, what would eventually happen? When, when, when they decide to become leaders, they missed the perfect role, what a leader's supposed to be. A leader's supposed to be exemplous, that the younger generation may be able to grab onto something. And when we look back, there were many in the past that didn't set no example, but you see, God was with them. But let me move on a little bit. I am a part of the commission board. I am a part of the commission board. And this is the, this is the Parkland Rect. And they, they put me, you know, they assign us in different eras, you know? And so, I'm a part of the citizens, of different era, like the ball field, whoever, whatever, the different era. But they assign me to do, to be a part of the, to, you know, just look around and see what's going on, right? And so, from last year, that I'm a part of the citizens, Sinister Citizens. So, I go to that building some now and again and look what's going on, need to be done, you know? And I realized from last year, I've been seeing some stuff that need to take care of, and I tends to report it. And I talked to the manager about it, and so on, what's going on. They said, well, keep on doing that and keep on doing that, and, and sending information in, and nobody comes in. So, a couple days ago, I, about two weeks ago, I went there and I saw some things. I heard, one, they have power problem there continuously, right? And they have a faulty machine, malfunction stove in there, and, and so on. The building leaking also. The power go out last year. Just a couple days ago, they supposed to have a party, and the power's go out again. Already sending email, but not only that, because as a leader, I came here and I said, I want to sit with somebody and talk to them about the issue. And I was threw off, like, say, okay, you can't talk. So, I emailed them. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Dr. Patton, could you have somebody now go and make sure we get all the details?
We shall make sure we get all the details. Mr. Pace will meet with the gentleman.
That concludes our non-agendered speakers, and that concludes our agenda. Our meeting is now adjourned.